Welcome, everyone. It's Tuesday, April fifteenth. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sunshine Notice, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, public meeting agenda for Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is now seven twelve. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting was published in November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Mayor Kelly?
Present.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Minutes, please.
We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca? Mayor Kelly?
Aye, thank you.
Minutes.
Communications, please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Nutley High School Volleyball Booster Club has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold a raffle on Sunday, June first, two thousand and twenty-five, at forty-four Park Avenue between the hours of one P M. and four P M. Move it, please.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Bills, please.
Yes, bill list for April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Public Affairs, one hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine cents. Revenue and Finance, four million, four hundred and four thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. Public Safety, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-five cents. Public Works, one hundred and four thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and eight cents. Parks and Public Property, six hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Water and Sewer Utilities, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and zero cents. Payroll as of April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, regular payroll total, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Overtime payroll total, fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. Total payroll, one million, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-two cents, for a grand total of six million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we'll hear public comment on agenda items only. This is public comment on agenda items only. Those wishing to be heard on agenda items only, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record, please. Seeing none, Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Evans?
Nothing for me this evening.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you. Yes, on this Thursday, April seventeenth, at dusk, we will have our flashlight, Easter egg hunt, all right, at Reinheimer Park. And on Saturday, the nineteenth of April, we will have our egg extravaganza festival at ten A M. at forty-four Park Avenue. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes, Mayor. Last Saturday, we had a successful shredding day. We had over three hundred residents show up with shredding. So it was a good event, something we do every year around Tax Day. And this Saturday, we're having our compost giveaway at the parking lot behind Chickaleese. We're also going to set up a rigid plastic recycling container. So residents can drop off their rigid plastic if they're cleaning up their yards for the spring or any other rigid plastic they'd like to recycle. That's it, Mayor.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, I'd just like to thank all of Public Safety. Saturday, we had a very, very beautiful Easter bunny in the fire department that we took pictures with all the kids on Saturday, that rainy day. And then Sunday, the volunteer fire department had the pancake breakfast, very successful. They did an excellent job. And this, one last thing, I'm sure everybody's seen the police all over town enforcing these crosswalks. So please, you know, I said at the last meeting, God forbid if you hit somebody, you know, there's two tragedies when somebody gets hit by a car, the person who hits them and the family who either is injured or loses someone. But just very crystal clear, it doesn't matter if it's the President of the United States that goes through one of these crosswalks and these guys are out in force, you will get a ticket. Anybody in town, please yield to pedestrians. And this loud shout out to the pedestrians also, please at night, wear bright clothing. Please, before you step in a crosswalk, look both ways. Even though you have the right of way, it's not worth having your AirPods on or looking at your cell phone and getting hit by a car. So it's a team effort. And, you know, we need the help of the residents, pedestrians, and our police department. Thank you, Mayor.
One more thing, Mayor?
Absolutely.
So just to wish everybody a happy Passover and a happy Easter.
Yes, thank you. Happy Passover, happy Easter to everyone. The Health Department will be doing its annual rabies vaccine clinic on April twenty-second, which is this Tuesday from four to seven thirty. And as always, we're doing this in conjunction with the Revenue and Finance Department. So you could bring your pet to get vaccinated and then register them with the Revenue and Finance Department. The vaccine is good for three years. So if you previously got your pet vaccinated last year, you don't need to come again this year. If you're within one year, you're more than welcome to come and have the vaccine administered to your pet. If you're more than a year out, the veterinarian is going to say to come back next year. We also have the monthly Children's Health Clinic on April seventeenth at eight thirty at the Nutley Health Department. On April twenty-fourth, from ten A M. to twelve P M., we have a depression screening at the Health Department. And on May sixth, from two P M. to four P M. at the Health Department, we have melanoma screening. If anyone's interested in any of these programs, please call the Health Department for more information. At this time, we'll roll into ordinance introductions. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance that amends our current ordinance related to tobacco. Actually, as to related to liquor licensing, we haven't changed our liquor licensing fee since two thousand and ten. And this ordinance reflects an increase in the annual cost of the licensing fee. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertise in Nutley Sun together with a notice required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. And now we have ordinances on second reading. If you want to continue, Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an amendment to our existing ordinance to include hemp shops that need to be, that are subject to licensing. It also restricts the number of hemp shops and vape shops to actually the number that we have in place today. It also reduces the licensing fee from fifteen hundred dollars down to seven hundred and fifty dollars annually.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing on ordinance number three, five, seven, seven regarding the regulation and sale of tobacco hemp and related products. Anyone wishing to be heard, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record.
Move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
My next ordinance is, oh, because I'm moving.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Now, can I move on? Okay. Okay, ordinance number thirty-five eighty. This ordinance is actually addresses some technology improvements in the municipality, specifically running a fiber line access to the school facility, which will now be located at seven, seven, seven Bloomfield Avenue, as well as some other improvements within the municipality. Open the public hearing.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing on ordinance number three, five, eight, zero for technology improvements. Anyone wishing to be heard on this ordinance, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record.
Seeing no one. Move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
What was the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Staying.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. Moving on to resolutions, Commissioner Evans?
Yes, thank you. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State, New Jersey, that the treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of property taxes in the amount of seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-four cents for Block forty-four hundred, Lot one. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
My next two ordinance is relate actually to the same thing. We did have a sewer main break between Conover Avenue and Florence Street requiring emergency repairs. When emergencies occur under N J S A forty-eight colon one eleven dash sixteen, we can enter into contracts to get that done immediately without having to go through the public bidding process. We have engaged, received a proposal from Montana Construction Corporation at eighty content Avenue in Lodi for an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Because we're in between the introduction of our budget and the adoption of our budget, it will require an amendment to our budget before we adopt the two thousand and twenty-five budget. However, funds are available in account five oh five seven one zero two five six for this capital outlay, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, that does hereby authorize the Commissioner of Public Works and the Municipal Clerk to enter into an emergency contract with Montana Construction for an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Be resolved that the qualified purchasing aide and chief financial officer are authorized to take all necessary steps to comply with the resolution, and that two copies of this authorizing resolution be filed with the Division of Local Governmental Services, along with an affidavit of the Chief Financial Officer pursuant to N J S A forty-eight colon four dash fifty-two. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
My second resolution relates to the exact same thing, but under N J S A forty-eight colon four dash forty-six, it sets up the emergency appropriation, which will be necessary to, in order for us to adopt an amendment to our budget for two thousand and twenty-five. So be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State, New Jersey, that in accordance with N J S A forty-eight colon four dash forty-eight, an emergency appropriation is hereby made for capital improvements, capital outlay, sixty thousand dollars. That said, emergency appropriation shall be provided for in full for the two thousand and twenty-five budget, and the water sewer utility and two copies of this resolution will be filed with the Director of the Division of Local Governmental Services. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci? I'm sorry, Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yeah, before I vote, I'd just like to thank Commissioner Evans for doing what we needed to do on an emergency basis so we can get that sewer line fixed. It was collapsed. There was no sewage passing on Saic Avenue. We were able to bypass it over the weekend. And by Tuesday, we had a contractor in there fixing it. Still some work to be done to get it totally fixed, but hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have that all done. And thank you, Commissioner. Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
And as someone who lives on that street and was affected by it, it's much appreciated. Aye.
That's news I could have used.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you. Whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Parks and Public Property provides transportation services to senior citizens free of charge who have no other means of transportation, whereas to receive money from the Federal Transit Administration. As a recipient or sub-recipient, the township is required to implement a non-discrimination policy to ensure compliance with Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. Whereas the township has drafted a revised Title Six policy to ensure continued compliance with the Act, which was subsequently revised, reviewed, rather, by the New Jersey Department of Transportation and found to be fully compliant with federal requirements. Whereas the Township of Nutley accepts the attached revised Title Six non-discrimination policy as approved by the New Jersey D O T, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the mayor and Board of Commissioners, town clerk, are hereby authorized to execute all documents necessary to ensure compliance with this resolution. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Whereas in nineteen forty-nine, the legislature set aside the last Friday of April as Arbor Day to promote the planting of trees and to encourage the protection of our forests from fires and pests that destroy the beauty, usefulness of our woodlands. Whereas half of New Jersey's total land area is forested or tree-covered, whereas trees play an important role in the ecosystem in which we live, the trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil caused by wind and water, clean the air we breathe and the water we drink, produce oxygen, provide habitat for birds and wildlife, and reduce heating and cooling costs by moderating temperatures. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper for fine literature, wood for homes, fuel for fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees provide increased property value, enhanced economic viability, and pleasing aesthetic qualities along streets and properties municipalities. And whereas tree planting in yards and farms and schoolyards and parks and along streets and highways creates an enduring heritage for generations that follow. And whereas the Township of Nutley has completed its thirty-sixth year as a member of Tree City, USA, and whereas I, Commissioner Morrow, Tucci, Director of Parks and Public Property of the Township of Nutley, do hereby proclaim April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five as Arbor Day in the community of Nutley, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our town's urban forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden hearts, and promote the well-being of present and future generations. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli, I see you don't have anything on for this evening?
Nothing on to say.
Thank, thank you. Commissioner Petracca?
Whereas the Township of Nutley recognizes the threat that natural hazards pose to the people and property within Nutley, whereas the Township of Nutley has prepared a multi-hazard mitigation plan hereby known as the two thousand and twenty-five S County Hazard Mitigation Plan in accordance with the federal laws, including the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, as amended, the National Flood Insurance Act of nineteen sixty-eight, as amended, and the National Dam Safety Program Act as amended. And whereas in two thousand and twenty-five, S County Hazard Mitigation Plan identifies mitigation goals and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property in Township of Nutley from the impacts of future hazards and disasters. And whereas the adoption of the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley demonstrates its commitment to hazard mitigation and achieving the goals outlined in the two thousand and twenty-five S County Hazard Mitigation Plan, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the two thousand and twenty-five S County Hazard Mitigation Plan is hereby adopted. And while content related to the Township of Nutley may require revisions to meet the plan approval requirements, changes occurring after the adoption will not require the Township of Nutley to re-adopt any future iterations of this plan. Subsequent plan updates follow. Approval period for this plan will require separate adoption resolutions. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have four resolutions on for this evening, starting with Resolution number one hundred and twenty-five. This is a resolution for various raffle licenses within the municipality. The first one, the first one is Home School Association, Good Shepherd Academy, License Number twenty-six, twenty-five, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, off-premise merchandise raffle. Nutley Family Service Bureau, License Number twenty-seven, twenty-five, June, Saturday, June seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, on-premise tricky tray. Nutley Family Service Bureau, License Number twenty-eight, twenty-five, off-premises fifty-fifty cash raffle, Saturday, June seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Nutley High School Volleyball Booster Club, on-premises tricky tray, License Number twenty-nine, twenty-five, June first, two thousand and twenty-five. Nutley High School Volleyball Booster Club, off-premise merchandise raffle, License Number thirty, twenty-five, June first, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by municipal clerk in the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved. The municipal clerk is authorized to issue said licenses. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Thank you. The next one I have on for this evening, oh, sorry, aye. We're all screwing up tonight. Moving on to the next one I have on for this evening is Resolution number one oh one twenty-five. And this is to recognize Thursday, April twenty-fourth, as a day of remembrance for the victims of the Holocaust. Whereas the Holocaust was a systemic persecution and murder of six million Jews and millions of other innocent victims by the Nazi regime and its collaborators. Whereas Holocaust education and remembrance are essential to ensuring such atrocities never happen again. Whereas the theme of for two thousand and twenty-five is survival and life after the Holocaust. We stand united against all forms of hate that continue to threaten communities worldwide. Whereas this includes harassment and calls for violence against Jews in our schools, in our communities, and online. This plain antisemitism is reprehensible and dangerous. We, the people of Nutley, should always remember that the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. Therefore, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, recognize the evening of Wednesday, April twenty-third, through the evening of Thursday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, the day of remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust, also known as Yom Hashoah, in honor of the survivors, as well as the rescuers and liberators. And further resolved that we, as citizens of Nutley, should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
And at that time, they really did this, especially since it's also Passover. So I forget. It's a great time anymore.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. The next one I have on for this evening is to recognize the month of May as Mental Health Month. And I do know that there's a lot of recognition in the month of May, and we'll have more on for the May meeting. But this is the first of many recognizing the month of May as an important recognition month. This is Resolution number one oh two twenty-five, where mental health is extremely important at every stage of life, from childhood to adulthood. Whereas nearly one in five American adults will have a diagnosable mental health condition in any given year. Whereas fifty percent of all lifetime mental illness begins by age fourteen and seventy-five percent by age twenty-four. Whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death among people aged ten to fourteen. Whereas connecting with people, being physically active, practicing mindfulness, and being kind to yourself could help you feel more positive and get the most out of life. Whereas the organization Mental Health America has chosen turn awareness into action as a theme for two thousand and twenty-five. This theme celebrates and promotes, celebrates the progress made in recognizing the importance of mental health and challenges that individuals turn to turn understanding into meaningful steps toward change. Whereas the Township of Nutley remains committed to ensuring our community remains a stigma-free zone that was designated in April of two thousand and twenty-one. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State, New Jersey, recognize May as Mental Health Month and call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools, and the Township of Nutley to recommit to our community, to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate accessible services for all people with mental illnesses at all stages. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Before I vote, I would just like to say that we have resources available, especially at the Health Department. As the resolution calls out, Nutley is a stigma-free zone and will continue to be a stigma-free zone. So if you're in need of help, don't hesitate to reach out. The Health Department has a counselor on hand every Friday. And if you're, you need help on another day of the week, we have a contract with Nutley Family Service Bureau, and we can get you the help that you need. If you desire more information, please reach out to the Health Department if you have any issues regarding mental health. I vote aye. The last one I have on for this evening is a resolution, resolution recognizing the month of May as melanoma skin cancer detection prevention month. And as I said earlier, there's a lot of recognition in the month of May, and we'll have more on at the next meeting. We just wanted to split it up. This is Resolution number one oh three twenty-five, where more people are diagnosed with skin cancer each year in the United States and all other cancers combined. Whereas current estimates that are one in five Americans will develop skin cancer by the age of seventy. Whereas the American Academy of Dermatology encourages everyone to perform regular skin self-exams to check for signs of skin cancer, is that half of all melanomas are self-detected. Whereas when detected early, the five-year survival rate for melanoma is ninety-nine percent. Whereas melanoma is most commonly associated with skin cancer, but can be detected in other places on your body, such as hair, the lining of our internal organs, our eyes. When it forms in the eye, it's known as ocular melanoma, or more specifically, uveal melanoma, because it forms in the uveal tract of the eye. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, to recognize May, two thousand and twenty-five, as melanoma slash skin cancer detection and prevention month, and encourage all residents to take necessary precautions to prevent and or decrease their risk of melanoma and other skin cancers, and to seek out free cancers, free skin cancer cleaning, screening where available. One such screening will be available at the Nutley Health Department on Tuesday, May sixth, from two to four P M. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye, and that's all I have. At this time, we'll open the meeting up to the public. Anyone wishing to be heard may address the Board of Commissioners. Approach the microphone and state your name for the record, please.
The first thing for those I mean, for a home living alone, it's really difficult to have these garbage bins in the morning. They're, they're, they're absolutely ridiculous. You don't have a truck at the end of the day. Why do they have to have them there? And why does your name have to be?
Sure, Mrs. Baz, the reason for the change had to do with ongoing circumstances regarding the, the reason for the change had to do with ongoing circumstances regarding the finances. Had we done nothing, the increase to the budget and to our taxes would have been substantial, where this change allowed us to avoid a significant cost increase. What size can do you have? So the default is for everyone to get ninety-five gallons. We do have sixty-four gallon containers available. And we'll, if you just call the Health Department, we'll swap that out for you as soon as we are able. Right, at no, at no cost.
But you know, they don't even take the garbage, the whole garbage that's in it. They only reach in what they can reach. They put your garbage in your grocery store, the garbage in the middle.
Yes, and so that's, that's a concern we have, and it's, it's an issue we're dealing with, with, with the town attorney to get compliance with our contract. And this, we've had a number of ongoing conversations with the garbage contractor. However, it hasn't borne any fruit. So we're looking at escalating it through the, through the town attorney. So the language on the, the trash cart was because we capitalized it, and the language was approved by the town attorney because we had to designate that the ownership of the can belongs to the township. Like I said, the, the language was approved by the town attorney. I, I don't believe it's advertising. And as I said, the, as, as I said, the, the language was approved by the township attorney. I said, as I said, the language was approved by the township attorney. We were required, we were required by law to designate the property of the township.
The garbage stays on the congratulatory, because he doesn't own any other town that are a councilman that a councilman has their name on it, definitely garbage.
Well, I don't believe that's accurate, but.
And no matter who approved it, if you sit and think about it, a lot of them, we are advertising them.
Well, I, I'm, I mean, that, that's your opinion.
What's yours?
My opinion is it's not advertising for me.
I don't understand why your, why your name has to be on a garbage bin in my, on my property. I didn't get the permission to add to try to own my property.
Well, it's not, as I said, it's not advertising, it's a requirement under the law.
But the second thing I'm trying to, I don't know, about trees. We had a real problem the other day on High Hill Lane. And I think, you know, trees are like people, they have the likes of them. So I understand all this nonsense, you know, my thing nonsense, but about preserving trees and all that, but if your tree reaches its start range, don't you think it should be taken down?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And we do that on an ongoing basis.
I have a tree, I don't have a tree, I have a tree on tennis place on my family lane. If it falls, it's going right on my house, because they trim all their, you know, their side.
Right, on their side, correct.
And I can't get in there to trim on my side, because you need a cherry pit, it's up there. And the, what's his name, Barlow was there.
John Linson, yes.
So the tree is perfectly planted, you willing to give me a paper saying it's perfectly planted, so if anything happens, the town's responsible?
If you would like something from the Township Arbors, he's a certified tree expert, we'd be happy to facilitate that for you. Mm-hmm.
...to have their electricity hooked up.
Yeah, well, Mrs. Bazza, sometimes you can't, you can't tell, all right, what's going on, on the inside of a tree. There's different techniques that they use. They drill into them, they have sounding devices that they use to see if they're, they're solid and they're still sound, but every now and then, it's, it's, it's difficult, it's difficult to determine whether a tree is, is hazardous. If it's hazardous, or it's, it's infringing upon anyone's safety, or we believe it could in the very near future, we take them down on public property. On private property, we don't, we don't, we're not. Well, because, because it varies, they're all different, they all, they all, they all decline at a different pace. So to just, you know, try and broad brush, you know, every, every different species of trees wouldn't, wouldn't be a correct thing to do. All right, but we are constantly evaluating the trees that are out there. Mr. Linson's in town every, every week, all right? Our shade, wait, let me finish, let me, oh, I took over, our shade tree people are out every single day, all right, along with all of our supervisors, and if there's a tree that looks like it's, it's going to pose a danger to anyone, we act on that immediately.
It cost me $600 just to have it cleaned up, and I have a pool in my yard. You want to see what it means to have a pool and have a.
Yes, I do understand what it means to have a pool, yeah, I know. I have the same issue. I have the same issue, but, you know, fortunately, you know, the trees in Nutley were here before the homes were. As the town developed and more homes were built, they didn't eliminate many of the trees because that adds to the character and the charm of the town. I mean, we're constantly replanting. We replant different species, all right, that aren't as large and fit in the, in the planting strips and don't present the same types of dangers. But you have to remember, going back when, you know, this was farmland, there were many large trees, and, you know, many of them are aging out, all right? And there's a, there's a balance that, that we have to strike, all right? Because people love trees. If you, if you read the information, put it. Well, maybe you live in the wrong town if you don't love trees, because we've been a tree city for, for 36 years. I know you do, yes. Yeah, you're correct. And the, and the arbors, the arbors does in fact zero in on them. We have many, many trees. Unfortunately, he can't get all of them all of the time, but he does the best that he can, you know, with the personnel that we have in the Parks Department. Who's planting trees on property lines? Who's planting trees on property? You mean individuals? Homeowners? Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that. It's logical. People always come first.
Yeah.
And then the trees, yes.
Anyone else wishing to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, I believe we have a need for an executive session this evening, Mr. Bruno. Thank you, I'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Second.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, public law in 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, and where's the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist? And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, move into closed executive session to discuss litigation. Be it further resolved at a time when such discussion, discussion may be disclosed to the public, shall be when and such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley.